All right, call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April 21st, 2016. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, will you swear in on your member, please?
Yes. We have a new commission tonight, Kathy Casey. I'd like to introduce her to everybody here and go through the oath of office. I, Kathy Casey...
I, Kathy Casey...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
And discharge faithfully...
And discharge faithfully...
The duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner...
The duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner...
For the City of Coon Rapids...
For the City of Coon Rapids...
And the County of Anoka...
In the County of Anoka...
And the State of Minnesota...
And State of Minnesota...
To the best of my judgment and ability...
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome Commissioner Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. And now, Mr. Harlecker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Knoblock?
Present.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Hosh?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmaltz?
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson?
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Next, we need to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Stevens.
Second.
Second by Hosh. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of our minutes of our March 17th, 2016 meeting.
Chairman Schwartz?
Commissioner Hosh?
Motion to adopt the minutes as stated.
Second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we have one abstention.
Abstention.
Commissioner Casey. Most minutes are approved. Our first order of business, Planning Case 16-2, a preliminary plat for Vision 15, the 12 lot townhouse development, 1005 Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, Vision Bank. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, excuse me. The first two items tonight relate to the same parcel and the same project. It's an 11 unit townhouse development located at 1005 Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension. It's the highlighted parcel here. There's currently a vacant single-family house on the parcel. Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension on the front here, railroad tracks to the west, and single-family residences to the east, and a gas line property to the north. What I'd like to do is take both the site plan and the preliminary plat discussion at the same time, and then we'll make separate motions on each of them.
Very good.
So this is the site plan for the 11 unit townhouse development. If you recall, last time the commission saw this, it was 15 units. They have since reduced the number down to 11. They've got three 3-unit buildings here, here, and here, with a 2-unit building at this end here. The main entrance is coming in off the service drive. It's 24-foot wide driveway coming in, terminating here, with an emergency access going out to 101st. The applicants' engineer did look at the possibility of making this the main entrance, but because of the way the streets align and the location of the properties, they weren't able to do that. Like I said, it's a 24-foot wide driveway coming in, with the smaller driveways servicing the units here, 8, 9, 9, 10, and 11, and 6, 7, and 8 off this drive, and 3, 4, and 5, and 1, and 2 off of this drive here. There is a common outdoor area, recreational area here that meets the zoning code requirements. The units do comply with setback requirements, including the 25-foot setback from the residential district here. There is a 50-foot wide utility easement, gas line easement, running parallel to the railroad tracks, that narrows down to 20 feet here, and then extends out along the Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension here. All of the units are outside of that easement. Each of the units has the required parking spaces. There's two in the garage, and two in front in the driveway. There are also six common parking spaces, two at each end of the driveways here, and then there's two on a widened area on the access street coming in, Street A. This is the grading plan. The site drains naturally from this corner up here down to the low area down in this area here, so that's the way it's graded. There are retaining walls along this here and between the units at this location here. There is a drainage pond located between the 2-unit building, excuse me, and Street A at this location here. It'll be a dry pond and really functions as an overflow for stormwater management. There are underground detention areas built into this project, so the stormwater will go into those first, then percolate out into this pond, and if there was an overflow, it flows out to the city system and Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension. The driveway will have curb and gutter along the perimeter of it. The city engineer was asking, and it was included in the staff report, that the developer improve the service road here. Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension service road is part of this project. The city engineer informed me that the residents would not be assessed for that. It would be done at the expense of the developer. The street's in pretty rough shape, and they felt that with the added traffic coming in here, it should be improved. I believe they're also be working with the city in a joint project to put curb and gutter along the site here. Also in a memo, the engineer is asking that the existing trail be improved. It is slated to be improved, I believe, next year, and so as part of this project, they should improve the area that is across their frontation on Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension. The landscape plan, it's lacking quite a bit of landscaping. They will need to add additional street trees along here, as well as open space plannings to meet the city code. There is, excuse me, a required 25-foot screen buffer between the units and the single-family residences on the most, so probably most of the landscaping will be focused in filling in that buffer. There are, they did provide street trees, or overstorey trees, along the driveways servicing the units, along the, there's eight of them, I believe, along the Street A. They did plan a row of lilacs along the emergency access here to screen these units from the gas line property to the north, and there are some 2, 4, 6 ornamental trees planted at the end of these townhouses here. They will be, we will work with the applicant so that it does meet the landscaping requirements of the city code. Here's a plat that's being proposed for this. It's called Vision 15. Here are the 3 3-unit buildings and the 2-unit building, and you can see the large glass, gas line easement running through here and out that way. This area out here, this rectangle, is an easement, highway easement that was part of Highway 10, old Highway 10 when it went through there. It's no longer needed, but it will just stay in place, and this lot line here will be removed, so the easement, as well as the rest of the open space, will all be contained in lot 1, or excuse me, as, I think it's Block 12, or Lot 12, Block 1. We will ask for drainage and utility easements over this area here, as well as a trail easement for the trail that will be going through there. Here are the elevations. It's a mix of, excuse me, lap siding, kind of a hardy plank lap siding, as well as vertical board and batten siding on the dormers here. The dormers and the variations in the roof line give some depth to the elevations, as well as the brackets underneath the overhangs that go over the garage and the entrances here, and then you also got the supporting posts to support the roof over the entrances. They do have nice full glass entrances there with the door and then the glass sides on it, so that gives the front of the building a nice break and appearance. The back is, it's pretty standard with the patio doors. You got the narrow lap siding on the two-end units, and then the wider lap siding on the middle units. Then here's the end with the, end with the board and batten siding up top and the narrow lap siding on the remainder of the building. They're proposing a mix of 3 and 4 unit townhouses. The first floor will be the garage, and then the main entrance going back to the great room, dining area, and kitchen, and then upstairs, we've got a 3-bedroom, or a 3-bedroom here with a shared bath in the middle, and with the 4 unit, you've got the 3 across the back with the bathroom off to the side here, so there are 3 and 4 bedroom units. With that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the conditions that park dedication fees be paid for the 11 units, all the engineering comments be addressed, and the area encumbered by the highway easement, that would be this area here, be included as part of Lot 12. And with the site plan for the townhouse development, staff is also recommending approval of that with the conditions that all the engineering comments be addressed, the landscape plan be revised so it complies with the buffer requirements, street tree requirements, and open space landscaping requirements. Children's play amenity and adult recreation amenity must be identified in the area up here. Homeowner's document must be approved by the city attorney, and that the preliminary and final plats be approved by the city council. With that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant's representative is here, and he's got some boards that show the colors that are being proposed on the exterior elevations.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair?
No, Commissioner Stevens.
Do you want questions just as to the plat, or as to both the plats?
Um, for both.
For both, okay. I have a few questions relating to the common open space area. The first question relates to fencing along the eastern property line. The Vision 15 diagram indicates to me that there is some existing fencing on that eastern line, but it doesn't even cover the entirety of the kids' play area, let alone the entire eastern property line that fronters that, you know, high-traffic railroad line. Is there any plan to, first of all, do we know what kind of fence that is, and secondly, is there any plan to have the fence go the entire length of the property line, or at least up to the, where it meets the northern property line?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the fence, whether it's going to be coming down as part of this or not. You can certainly ask, it might be worth while to put some fencing along the property line there between the units and the railroad tracks.
At least from where the kids are supposed to be playing. A second question about that area relates to the landscaping. Looking at the landscaping plan, it appears that only about 30% maybe of that area is going to be within the sod limits. Is that because of the terrain, or what's the reason why the entirety of that play area isn't sodded?
Well, part of it is, it relates to the grading. That's really where the limits of the grading are. Whatever area they clear up for the play area will have to be improved with the sod and probably some sort of material that's typically used in playgrounds, whether it's sand or ground-up tires, something along that nature.
Well, if the, if the area of sod is, that's sodded is because there's, there's a problem with the grading in that area, is there really going to be, are they going to be able to put in a play area there?
They could always grade it to meet that. It looks like that area there is fairly flat. If you look at the landscape plan, the contours there, it's a fairly flat area to begin with.
Right. Yeah, that's why, that's why I didn't understand, I didn't know why it's not sodded all the way out to the property line there, because it does appear, when I look at the grading plan, it doesn't appear particularly...
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens and Chair Schwartz, we probably could add a condition that all disturbed areas, including the area around the common area, be sodded.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, anyone else with any questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, petitioner, have anything they'd like to add?
Just if you have any questions, otherwise, please get it all out.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
I have a question, just in general. You've talked about Mr. Harlecker, the trail that would border that southern portion. Is that, that connects then to the city trails? Is that going to be a part of the city trail?
Yeah, Commissioner Casey, that would be, that's part of the city trail.
Okay.
That's part of the city trails.
It's not existing now, but it will be?
There is, but it's in very rough shape, as is most of the stuff along the Boulevard Extension there.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, at this time, open a public hearing for both Planning Case 16-1 and for Is there anyone present wishing to speak to either 16-1 or 16-2? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearings. Mr. Harlecker, is the road going to, or maybe this is for the petitioner, is the road that will be posted as a no parking, other than those two designated parking spots?
Yes. Chair Schwartz, I can answer that. It should be posted, no parking, because it's only 24 feet wide, except for this area here where it's been widened to accommodate on-street parking, this little shaded area here.
And I would imagine maybe that would then be striped to show two parking spaces, or?
Yeah, it'll be delineated.
Right.
Petitioner?
Petitioner, maybe you could give us a little more information on your panels here of products that you plan on using and colors, what have you?
You can see they're just kind of all the same family of kind of pastel, kind of in the town zones, and they'd be basically getting these types of rides a little bit...
But a variation between the units, but basically just to keep them all looking kind of similar and nothing that stands out too much. So you're going to be using wood doors just to give a little bit of that curb appeal from the street.
And do you have any samples for the shingles, or what color the roofing is going to be?
I do not have any. It'll be some complementary color, I mean, not going to be red or white or some crazy, but it'll be in the beige or tans, so, to go with these.
Commissioner, any questions? Mr. Chair? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, so I do want to ask about the plan. Is there any plan to put a fence on that eastern property line?
At this point, I don't believe there's a plan to put a fence in, but obviously we can work with the city and after the final grading and figure out what works best to make sure it's safe.
You wouldn't object to a requirement that a fence go up on that eastern line?
Exactly. I have to look at it and see how much fence and how, you know, where it's going to go and see the exact, how it would work out. So I can't say, yes, we'd love to have a fence there, or no, we wouldn't, but just kind of have to look at it a little more, see how it would tie in with the play area.
And just for correction, it would be the west, west...
Am I, am I, am I...
The west.
Correctional, so I'm here.
The west property line.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmaltz?
Yes, just one quick question. Is there going to be like a common trash removal for the townhomes, or will the individual units be responsible for their own trash removal?
Most of our, well, they've had their own trash bins that they keep in their garages. Assuming they're prepared to keep them out of the view of people.
Right.
So they keep them, and then they pull them out of the trash bin.
That, and then, Mr. Harlecker, then, do the, does the road then accommodate that type of traffic with the trash removal trucks coming through?
Yes, Commissioner Schmaltz, the 24-foot wide road should be able to accommodate...
Snowplows.
The trucks coming in, and then the driveways are wide enough for them to get in. They'd probably, they'd have to either back in or back out, but they'd be able to get in and out.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners Casey?
Is the snow plowing you mentioned, is the snow plowing private, though? That's what I understood. That's going to be a private entity within that complex? It won't be city plowing?
Yes. Commissioner Casey, it'll be private. The homeowners association will contract out for snow removal.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on, on here? Another question I would have for the petitioner is, do you foresee any problems with meeting all of our landscaping requirements, since you are considerably short on just about every area?
We'll work with the city to meet the requirements for, it looks like the concern was in that buffer zone between the other ones. Just depends on how big they need to be when you first plant them, hopefully there's some leeway in planting and giving time for stuff to grow a little bit to meet those requirements.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, our typical requirements for overstorey trees are 2 and 1/2 inches, so, that big around, and then ornamental trees are 1 and 1/2 inches, so there's enough room on site to accommodate the required landscaping.
Because looking at the table that you had in our paperwork, there are 8 overstorey trees short, 7 overstorey trees short in the open area, 18 evergreens in the open area, 5 ornament, or 31 in the ornamentals, and over 500 shrubs short. And those, I guess I don't understand why you would not have tried to be a little closer on the requirements on your plan to begin with.
I'm not sure why the surveyor or the land engineer didn't include enough to meet the city needs, and we'll work with the city to meet the requirements.
Chair Schwartz, we do allow some flexibility in the number if they put in oversized plantings, if you put in bigger trees, we'll give them credit for, you know, one or two, so that's one way to balance things out.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, any other questions? What's the thoughts?
Well, we're doing them separately.
We're doing them separately, correct.
Yeah, so I'm going to, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson?
I'm going to assume that most of the additional stuff we're going to have is going to be on the site plan, not on the plat, so I'll move in case 16-2 that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Schmaltz. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and decision by the city council at the May 3 meeting. Now moving on to 16-1, site plan. Commissioner Stevenson?
I'd like to propose two additional conditions. One, that all disturbed areas be sodded, condition 6, and condition 7, the fence be constructed along the entire western property line.
And you said a fence along the entire?
Yeah, western property line.
Chair Schwartz, I have a question for Mr. Harlecker for clarification.
Commissioner Knoblock?
Yeah, the western border with the pathway that's expected to be upgraded or developed, with the entire property line of the west, is there any potential conflict between the path and the proposed fence on the western border of the property line?
Well, yeah, we would, Commissioner Knoblock, we would coordinate with the location of the fence and the construction of the fence to make sure that doesn't happen.
All right, just to clarify that. Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, my question is, if we're going to just do the fence on the one side, is, looking at it, there looked like there was some, maybe some fence, I'm not sure what's on the other side, because the kids, by the playground, because the kids could just run around that...
Fence on the north, on the north property line, you say?
Yeah, I mean, you know, is there...
Mr. Chair, I think there is a fence on the northern line already, or at least one of the diagrams indicated that there was an existing fence there.
But I don't know how tall it is.
I don't, yeah.
Or the...
And I would certainly be open to...
You know, I mean, if you're just doing it that side, then...
Totally agree, totally.
So making sure that the fence is adequate, that the kids can't squeeze through between those, where the property is there.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the Vision 15 diagram, it does indicate that there is a fence on that northern property line, but I think that it makes sense to make sure that...
That it's connected.
It's connected.
So do we want to add fence along the entire west property line and north property line?
Western and northern property lines.
Mr. Chair, will that work with the planned lilacs along the north property line? Lilacs are on this side.
Commissioner, yes, it will. The lilacs are between...
The road and the house.
Yeah, they're between the emergency access and the units. The fence, there is an existing fence along here. I'm not sure of what shape it's in or how high it is.
Right.
But there is a fence along that gas line easement. So I think either we could, if it's sufficient, we can tie, it could tie into that fence at the corner here, and if it's not, they can improve it so that it is.
Do we want to have anything to say that the fences are compatible with each other?
Chair Schwartz, I believe, we guys just looking at a chain link, I believe the fence along the north property line is a chain link fence.
All right.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking at for along the railroad tracks also.
And Commissioner Stevenson, that would suffice with you?
For me, yes.
Probably a 6-foot?
Yeah.
Do we want to include that as part of the condition, 6-foot chain link?
Sure.
Those don't need to be 6 feet? And doesn't need to be chain link? Would we, if they wanted to go nicer, wouldn't we want to agree to that?
Code doesn't allow 9-foot.
No, 6-foot, like a wood foot. If they wanted a wood instead of a chain, you know, that's...
A minimum of a chain link?
Minimum.
Okay.
Or maybe just a fence agreeable to the...
To the city. To the city.
City.
To the planning department.
Yeah.
Make it look nice, Mr. Harlecker.
We'll leave it to Mr. Harlecker.
And save.
But just to confirm, Chair and Commissioners, you'd like that it to be a six-foot fence.
At least on the west side.
Okay.
For the railroad tracks, yes.
Where the play area is, you know, especially.
All right, anything else, Commissioner? Then, Commissioner Stevenson, you did make a motion initially, correct, adding those two conditions?
To add this, I'm happy to make an overall motion.
All right.
So, let's go back to the front page here. Okay, in planning case 16-1, I move that we recommend approval of the site plan with the stated conditions plus the following two additional conditions. Condition six, that all disturbed areas be sodded. Condition seven, that a fence approved by city staff be constructed along the entire western and northern property lines.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Stevens. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council. Thank you and good luck. Look forward to nice new building.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next case. We have a planning case 16-9, an amendment to Gateway Commerce Center planned unit development, HNW LLC. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is an amendment to the Gateway Commerce Center planned unit development to provide additional land to the car dealership site. If you recall, last year, the property is at the end of the cul-de-sac that runs parallel to Highway 10 and northwest of the Hanson Highway 10 interchange. That area highlighted here outlined. In April of last year, council and the commission approved the following a car dealership on this lot here, which is about six acres. A swim center, lots two and three, and then the remainder of the PUD stayed the same with a hotel and a restaurant along that stretch of roadway there. Now, Walser Group has purchased Lot 1, this lot here, and they have requested that in order to expand and make their dealership larger, they wanted to incorporate lots two and three into the design of their car dealership. That allows lots two and three with a site that was identified last year as a swim center. Current site plan has the car dealership at a building of 31,000 square feet and parking for 439 cars. Here's the proposed amended PUD site plan. As you can see, the property line is now right here. Still have a hotel site here and a restaurant site here. This site here is now a little over 10 acres. They would like to have a 60,000 square foot building and parking for 616 cars. Cul-de-sac will also be shortened by about 400 feet and that area incorporated into the new car dealership lot. For comparison, the, looked at, looked at three other car dealerships in the city that were fairly recently constructed. You have the Ford and Chrysler dealerships over off of Woodcrest Drive and Highway 10, and the Toyota dealership up by Riverdale. The Ford dealership is 11.8 acres, Chrysler site is 11.3, and the Toyota site, the developable part of that parcel, and a lot of it's wetland. But about 10 acres have been developed for the dealership. The building size, the Ford dealership has almost 48,000 square feet, the Chrysler dealership has 33,400, the Toyota at almost 53,52987, and the proposed Walser site is 61,000 square feet. Parking spaces, the Ford site has 991, the Chrysler site has 11, or 811, the Toyota has 598, and that proposed site plan here will have 616 spaces. So it's comparable to what the new dealerships, the newest dealerships in town have. And if you recall, Chrysler just recently expanded their parking area last year to bring it to 11.3 acres. So they added about, I think it was about two or three acres to it, to bring it up to 11.3. Other than the enlargement of this slot and the elimination of the swim center site, the rest of the PUD remains unchanged. The site plan does show two freestanding signs. That was an error in the site plan. You're only gonna have one. The building has been shifted further in this direction. It'll be 110 feet from the front property line and about 180 feet from the property line with the hotel. There is, the site plan should show the sidewalk along the interior side here of Gateway Drive. If you recall in past PUD presentations, there was a city trail identified along the back of the PUD here around the wetlands and stormwater ponds with a connection next to the hotel. That connection should be installed as part of the development of this PUD. The city will be responsible for installing any trail system in the open space behind it. And there is, the area here between the hotel site and the dealership site needs to be revised to include a buffer area here. There was an error in their design. It does show an access coming in here and then kind of some confusion as to where there is the parking. That would be cleared out, and this area in here, there'd be a landscape strip between the two that could accommodate landscaping and the trail connection to the back line of the property lot here. Also, as part of this, when this goes to the city council, the council will be considering the final plat for this lot here. So what will go to the city council will be your recommendation on the PUD site plan and the application for final plat for this lot here. For kind of a further comparison as to what's out there, this lot will be the largest lot in area of the, in the PUD. The next two largest lots are the hotel, it's 2.7 acres, and the lot here behind McDonald's, which was slated for a multi-story office, hotel, retail use. That's 4.48 acres. As far as building sizes, it's the third, third, third largest. The hotel was approved for 78,000 square feet, and the building here on Lot 7 was approved for 100,000 square feet. To give everybody an idea as to the, how this site and building compares with the rest of the planned unit development. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the PUD with the following conditions. Only one new car dealership is allowed in the PUD. The applicant is not proposing a second dealership here, so it'll just be one dealership on a larger parcel. All conditions of the original PUD approval are included in this approval. The applicant receive all permits necessary for the grading done as part of the cul-de-sac work. Approval and execution of an amendment to the PUD agreement. Sidewalk along Gateway Drive be shown on the site plan. Sidewalk connections between the trail along the wetlands and Gateway Drive must be shown. That would be in this area here. The applicant must receive all necessary permits from Coon Creek Watershed District. Only one freestanding sign is allowed for the dealership. And the access is shown along the lot line between the dealership and the hotel. This access must be eliminated and a landscape buffer shown between the two lots. And the applicant is here in the audience also, maybe to give a brief presentation as to the status of the PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Mr. Harlecker, was there any discussion with the applicant about a comprehensive look at the PUD or just this amendment?
Well, it was just for this, just this amendment.
Okay, so there was no request made to take a look at the PUD as a whole this time by staff, or the applicant didn't talk about looking at the other parcels within the PUD?
No, Commissioner Stevenson, that was done when they came in for the amendment last year. They did, the council approved the amendment for the dealership and the swim club. Then they also added a condition to allow more flexibility with the remainder of the PUD in order to limit future amendments. Staff felt that this was significant enough to warrant another PUD amendment and fell outside those flexibility parameters.
So even with the flexibility, we still need to do another amendment?
Yes, with this, this is large enough that requires that.
And am I correct, this is the third amendment to the PUD?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, so the cul-de-sac at the end of this property is gonna be shortened by 400 feet? That was my.
Correct.
And so that, does that essentially leave one access point to this, this 10-acre area now? Isn't, it's just one drive in and drive out of the dealership to, and then to access all those back parking lots and? Is that sufficient?
Well, they'll, they'll, they show here on the site, it shows two access points into this dealership. One going in this way, then another one coming straight in off the cul-de-sac. So they've got one here and one out here.
Within the cul-de-sac, then there's two outlets.
Correct, at the end of the cul-de-sac to service this lot.
Okay. Are we calling, one more question, please. Okay, we're calling Lot 1, 2, 3. That whole 10 acre incorporates, whole 10 acres incorporates Lot 1, 2, 3?
Yes.
From the PUD?
Yep.
And one other question? What, what happened to the swim school?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Harlecker, just to follow up on the cul-de-sac area a little bit. Is the design of this going to be such that it's going to allow the transport vehicles, trucks, to go in onto the property to unload?
Chair Schwartz.
Or are they gonna be unloading out on Riverway Drive?
No, the, the, the transport trucks could come straight in at this point here and go inside the site and drop off wherever they need to go. There is the ability, that's what this access right here shows. They can just come straight in.
Then the other question might be, will they do that? Because I know when we did the addition to the Chrysler lot, the provision was, when we increased their parking area there, that their transport vehicles were going to pull into the lot to empty, and they're constantly unloading on Woodcrest Drive.
Okay, that's the first I've heard of that.
All right, maybe the department can look into that.
Yep.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we aren't unloading vehicles out on Gateway Drive, Center Drive. And the fire department has no problem with access using just that one cul-de-sac location?
It's always been one cul-de-sac since that.
All right.
They do have access around the building. There's all around, that was one of the issues that was looked at when this PUD was originally looked at a long time ago. On that there'd be the ability to get behind all the buildings to access all four sides, and that's still the case with the car dealership.
And then maybe one final question for you at this point. Included in our packet was a proposed landscape plan. We're not being, that's not gonna be the final plan, correct?
This is what, when they come in with a site plan for this, we will compare it to what they've got here for consistency. So if you feel there should be more landscaping on here, now's the time to, to let everybody know, let the applicant know.
Because at this point, we don't even know the exact design of what the building is gonna be like. So it's kind of hard to say where we want landscaping.
Well, Chair, at this point, you're really looking at the perimeter landscaping. That's not gonna, the perimeter of the property's not gonna change. When they come in for the actual building location, which should be fairly close to what they're showing here, we'll get into the details about foundation planning and exactly what goes in around, close to the building.
I'm hoping that there's gonna be some articulation of the building. It's not just gonna be a big rectangular building like is shown here.
Correct. They will have to meet the design standards of the PUD.
All right, petitioner, have anything they'd like to come up and add? Please come up to the mics, give your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Adam here, representing HNW. My address is 2705 Pond View Curve, Victoria, Minnesota. And I'd be happy to talk to you a little bit about, one of the questions, I believe, was the swim school. So we've, you know, spent a couple of years working with them and, you know, had, really envisioned them to be on the site, and unfortunately, they haven't been able to, to make their concept work. So Walser came to us a couple of months ago and asked to expand their dealership size and came to the realization that they would be, they could have a much nicer dealership for the site if they had a little bit more square footage. So that's the reason and the intent here is if the swim school was viable still, you know, they would still be able to come in and, and execute on that, but at this point, they, it's not, so. If any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioner, any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I kind of asked this question of Mr. Harlecker, but I'm wondering, was there any consideration to doing a comprehensive look at the PUD when you came in with this amendment request?
Well, as Mr. Harlecker said, we did do that in the last amendment. So this amendment was, all we're doing is taking the lot, Lot 2 and 3, which was already for the swim school, and adding it to the Walser site plan. So we're creating one lot instead of having three or two separate platted lots. All the other uses are the same. In fact, Lot 4, the hotel, is, will be coming before you on your June meeting with the site plan for that lot. We're on the, on the city council meeting for May for the plat for that lot as well, so that one is, is coming through. So we should have both the Walser plat and the hotel plat on the next council meeting in May, and hopefully, they get approved.
Thank you.
Can I ask a-
Commissioner Casey?
Yes. Do you rep, did you say at the beginning that you represented Architectural Consortium?
No, I do not. I'm, I'm actually the developer for the property and part of the land ownership.
Okay.
Architectural Consortium is our architect.
Okay. Thank you.
Commission, any other questions for the petitioner? All right, we need to have a public hearing on this case. So we'll open a public hearing on Planning Case 16-9. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this case? Step up the microphone, please, give your name and address.
Okay, my name is Lori Jansen. I live at 1221 118th Avenue Northwest in Coon Rapids. And I've lived here since about 1988. When we first moved here, we, my husband and I really liked the openness of the city. We opposed this plan back when the Army Corps of Engineers initially had this property. We wrote a lot of letters, said we wanted to keep it the way it was. It was a nice amenity to the city. I'm disappointed to find out at this late date that this is happening. I'm disappointed that, you know, you want to put a hotel in there. I feel as if we have plenty. I don't really see why a person would want to stay in Coon Rapids in a hotel. So I think two hotels in that location maybe is overkill. I'm also disappointed in a 600-plus car dealership. I just, there's so much wildlife in there. There are deer, eagles nest, swans, sandhill cranes. I'm concerned about what that's going to do to the wildlife in the area. And also the presentation of our city. If you drive down 35W to Roseville, you see car dealership after car dealership. And I'm afraid that that may be what our city is going to turn into. I think we have so much more to offer than just more retail visible as the first thing you see when you come into the city. So I'd like to ask you to deny this request for the increased site. I know that it's too late to go back and say you can't have a dealership that was a done deal a while ago. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't know about it sooner, but I would just like you to reconsider. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing?
Good evening, my name's Mary Standard. My address is 1201 109th Lane, Northwest in Coon Rapids. I'd agree with what Lori had to say. Just the thought of a car dealership up there just does not appeal at all. And people I've talked to, nobody knows about it. I found out about it through Lori, who happened to stumble across some information. So I just don't feel like people really have had a chance to put any, have any input into it. I also am concerned about the wildlife back there and the nesting eagles. And how that's going to disrupt them. And has the DNR put any, had any input into the disruption back there? So, um, I don't know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you wish to address any of those comments? On legal basis?
Chair Schwartz, I guess, this has been in place for so many years. This was originally the Cooley property and we had approved, I think, either planning and a development or a site plan almost, what, more than 20 years ago? It was put on hold for a long period of time for a federal lawsuit. It got, we got between the Corps of Engineers and the property owner. And I think we just said, we're just holding our, our approval, you know, based on whatever the Corps works out. Well, that lawsuit's settled. And so that's maybe why these folks didn't realize that there had been something that was approved on that property for so many years. And so we are, at this point, that that lawsuit got settled and here we are back with the, with a PUD that had been in place for many, many years. It got amended, I think, to the city's benefit a few years ago to sort of tailor to the existing conditions now. But we are stuck with the uses that were originally approved in that plan, whether we like that or not. So we're working with that as a backdrop for this and history for this plan. And that's, that's what the commission has to deal with tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that information on the record and I figured you'd be the best one to present it. Anyone else for a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hosh?
I've been around now for several amendments, maybe all three of them, for this planned unit development. And I'm a little frustrated. A PUD was supposed to support diversity on this site. And the idea that we're having to make this less and less diverse and one big gigantic use is, it's, it's just frustrating. I understand that the market is not necessarily supporting that diversity. And I just wish our city could maybe come up with something that would attract exciting uses. And, and it just leaves me questioning the, the whole planned unit development process in the first place. I will probably end up supporting this, but I just think it's a shame.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson?
I share Commissioner Hosh's frustration. And I can tell you, I, I won't end up supporting it for exactly that reason. I think that, you know, the last time we had one of these amendments, we asked, we actually even tabled it, asking for a more comprehensive view. And my recollection is that the applicant came back to us and said, we're not doing that. We want you to vote up or down on the proposed amendment. And my recollection is that we kind of indicated that, okay, we'll go forward this time, but really, if you're going to continue to try and tinker with this piece by piece, we want a comprehensive look at, at the whole project. And at this point, here we are, one year later, and we're asking for another amendment to this PUD. I'm, I'm not voting in favor of another one until there's a comprehensive look of it. I understand that the facts on the ground have changed so that some of these uses are not viable anymore. And, and that's fine. I'm not saying that's what's written here needs to be in stone. But I, I don't think that this is the kind of thing we want to be doing piece by piece by piece. And I totally agree with what Commissioner Hosh said about how the idea here was to have a variety of uses. And now we're talking about eating up, you know, a huge chunk of this land with a, a massive car dealership. And I, I don't think that that's in keeping with what we thought we were doing when we, when this PUD was passed, which, you know, obviously predates my time on the panel. But I, I'm not supporting it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I concur to that.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah. We've changed it way too many times by putting in, not having the bank, which we understand because they said that they don't have big banks anymore. So now we have a Taco Bell. I mean, just, I think we need to really take a look at other uses maybe in this area. I won't support it either.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Knoblock?
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. Perhaps to have the information on record, there is the trade-off between business development and use of land and how it's used and such. But I think the one concern that may need to be clarified or communicated more is the role in how the environment is being protected. Because it is the Coon Creek shed and the stream and the animal wildlife there. Let me clarify, let me summarize that my question is what protections that will the public be provided with all this narrow area of this sensitive area being developed? And it's being developed in a multitude of different ways, as we've been hearing. What assurances can the citizenry have in regards to the protection of the surrounding environment?
Yeah, Commissioner Knoblock. When the PUD was originally approved, there was an overall stormwater management plan. That's where these ponds, stormwater pond here, retention pond here, this area here. They did some wetland reclamation over here. All that was done as part of the original PUD approval. So all the stormwater management and everything else goes into there. As each of these lots develops now, they have to meet their most current stormwater management plans. We saw that with, with the Taco Bell and McDonald's. Where they actually had to put smaller ponds on site. So as each of these sites developed individually, they're looked at, all right, now they got to meet the current standards. Coon Creek Watershed will also be looking at each of these parcels as they develop. And they have to get a permit from the Watershed District. So there's a, a couple of layers that the, of review prior to these, prior to any site getting final development approval.
Thank you for providing that information and clarifying it on the record.
Commission, anybody else? Well, I would also like to say that I'm considerably disappointed that we are getting another amendment aft, especially after last year, when we asked that it get a complete review. And that was more or less turned down. I also agree with Commissioner Hosh that there's supposed to be variations within the PUD. And this is going to make, at least looking at that last picked diagram that Mr. Harlecker had on the screen, at least half of the frontage to Coon Rapids or to Highway 10 is going to be a car dealership. That it's is not something that I think I'm willing to support at this time either.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmokey?
I guess the one thing, I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence in this topic. But I guess the clarification I would like is what our ask is then at this time? I think we're all equally disappointed. I certainly was disappointed when I read the agenda as well. But I'm not clear yet what we're asking them to do. Are we asking them to come back then with a, a new plan? Clearly, they're having some difficulty with the current plan with the swim facility. Are we asking them to come back with other options? What's, I guess, what would be their next step that we'd be asking for?
Well, it just appears to me that it sounds like there's a majority of the commission that doesn't want one huge portion of, of this PUD to be designated to a car dealership. That a car dealership on Lot 1 is, has already been approved and we're willing to accept that because we voted for it. But to take two more lots and incorporate them into a giant dealership, that my impression is that majority of the board is not in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner, or Mr. Harlecker?
The applicant would like to have an opportunity to maybe address some of your concerns.
All right.
I appreciate all the conversation. And I, I wanted to start off by talking about a little bit of the history. Because I know that there's some new members here too, that haven't been here for the 11 years that we've been working on this project. And that I've been involved, in fact. This project dates back to the landowner purchasing in 1972. So he's been vested here in this community for a very long time. In 2006, we spent a great deal of time preparing these design guidelines in the PUD. And then also executing mitigation plans and so forth to create on the 38 acres that is adjacent to this property that the owner, our ownership also retains, doing wetland improvements and changes. So everything that you see there today has been in place now almost 10 years. So when we talk about, you know, wildlife and things of that nature, this plan has been in place for 10 years already. The soil has already been considerably changed. It's 10 years ago, the road was installed 10 years ago. None of those things have changed. As far as the, you know, the plan itself, when we came in last year, we did actually ask at the council level to get some more flexibility with the PUD. So when you asked for having a study done, we actually were able to, on Lot 7, for instance, we had that slated as an office use all along. And now we have a designation of retail, hotel, or office. So we have some flexibility to get something done here. What we've seen in the market today is that, you know, Walzer's eager and ready to, to build another dealership in your community. And it's one that's already here. So they're, they're not taking away any jobs, they're actually adding jobs by, you know, bringing in more, another dealership. The dealership size is already six acres. They have asked to increase that size. If you look at the swim club size of the building, which was 30,000 square feet, and the original, you know, retail building that was slated on this property was also 30,000 square feet. The parking amount has not changed. The building size, while it's combined now, is still the same square footage that the two together were. And so we're, we're trying to, and we really did like the school, the swim school concept, which is why we asked for that in the last meeting, because we do feel it's an amenity to the city. And unfortunately, there's nothing I can do to help that situation with them. So I, and I did mention the hotel is coming forward. So we're going to be down to having Lot 5, 6, and 7. Lot 10 is also under contract with an approved use up in the, I guess, I'll call it the northeast corner. So we are, you know, finally gaining some strides here to get this development completed in a fashion that's supportive of, of the residents of the community. And so far, we feel that, you know, all the things that have been installed and built into this development have been, you know, high quality and are certainly being utilized by all the residents of the city. I mean, I, there's, all the numbers that I'm seeing from the Holiday Gas Station, the Taco Bell, McDonald's, the Caribou, Jimmy John's, they're all, their sales numbers are outstanding and they're all very excited to be here. So, you know, we, we hope that, you know, you could support this notion because we're trying to, you know, bring the quality to the development that we can. And we have some exciting new buildings that are going to be coming in the next couple of months, so. Thank you.
Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
I am the newbie here, so I'm just hearing some of this for the first time, but I live up there. And I'm inclined to say, I want to see that development up there. And it sounds to me as if the petitioner is, they're aware of the environment issues and they're aware of the future development that they're going to bring possibly to a June meeting. I want to see some development up there, so I think I, I would be inclined to approve it. I'll throw that out there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
I was just going to make a comment about, sometimes bigger isn't always better. When I look at this, it might be that, yes, combined with the two buildings, it's the same size with the swim club and what was the dealership that you had, they had proposed before. But it's huge. I mean, it's now, instead of two separate looking lots and, and stuff, all the parking. I'm, I'm thankful that the parking is all on one side and not kind of in, you know, more closer to the hotel and that type of stuff where it's all together. But it's just sometimes bigger isn't always better. That traffic, I live there, I go to Holiday, I, you know, do Caribou and all that stuff. It's a mess over there right now. I mean, there are almost accidents. So I think with all of this too, I don't know. I just, I feel like there needs to be something else looked at too. But I, I have a hard time with that big box look, so.
Chair Schwartz? Commissioner Knoblock?
I go by this area a few times a day. I live- I live relatively close to this area. I think it's a very good use of the limited, narrow space that's available in that area that's allowed. The development that has gone on, the traffic is much more. So I believe that the increase in traffic is in proportion to how successful the businesses are doing. I think it's spurring further development along the whole area, along the corridor there. It's a high visibility, it's a high-traffic area. I am necessarily, you know, I'm pro-environment, but I'm also pro-business and pro-reasonable. I trust the due diligence so far of what the planning, the city planning commission, the city office has done in preparing and the guidelines for it. I think, you know, as long as the area surrounding it is extremely beautiful, it's the live, there's very few areas that I know of in our area that has such a beautiful combination of wildlife and business working together. I think we should seriously consider the benefits of it. Nothing is ideal or perfect. But there is a long history of development, and it's been, I think we should, I think it's worthy, based upon what activity has gone on in this area and how it's been, how it has progressed, I think it's worthy of further consideration. So I would propose to consider to approve it.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Stevenson.
Just a couple of thoughts. One, you know, some talk here about the environment, and I think one thing we all have to keep in mind is that development's coming to this land.
Right.
One way or another. I mean, it's, whether this gets approved or not, it's happening. That decision to develop this land was made a long time ago. And, you know, whatever your feeling is about that, you know, I have an opinion about that. I think everyone here probably does. That's not sort of what we're talking about. The question is, what is going to happen here? What development are we going to have here? Are we going to have one large car dealership? Or are we going to have a couple of different amenities? And then the second piece is, how are we going to make the decisions about what's happening on this land? Are we going to make them ad hoc, just kind of, you know, let's see what we can do today and see what happens now? Or are we going to make a comprehensive view of this entire land? And I think the decision that was made a long time ago, I think it was the right decision, is that because this is such a high-traffic, visible part of the city, we want to make that decision as a comprehensive plan and not ad hoc, here's what makes, here's what we can fill this land with today. And so, that's why I'm frustrated with the continual, just sort of piecemeal, let's do what we can do to get something built, approach to this. Because it's entirely opposed to the general approach that we took with this land. And I think that Commissioner Stevens is exactly right, that building a very large car dealership on one of the few pieces of land that's still open for development along Highway 10, because a lot of that open land you see there, there's, that's not going to get built. You know, that's protected land. So it looks like there's a lot left out there, but there really is not. And using up such a huge chunk of it for a car dealership means that we aren't going to have the ability to use that high-traffic and high-visible area for some other use. You know, initially, there wasn't going to be a car dealership in this stretch at all. And there was going to be another amenity there that wasn't working out. And I think there was some impatience about it. And the dealership came in, and we went that direction. Now, that ship has sailed. That decision was made, and we have to live with it. But we don't have to turn over another chunk of land to a dealership. We can keep that parcel and say, you know, the swim school didn't work out, fine. But let's have a comprehensive look at what we're going to do with this land and try and get another amenity in there that works for the city, that is functional. And so, that's why I won't support this.
Thank you. Commission, anyone willing to try a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Stevens.
In Plan Case 16-9, I move that the commission recommend rejection of the amendment to the PUD.
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Stevenson, second by Stevens. Any further discussion?
I guess I have one additional question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
This is to the petitioner. The one question I was thinking of is, does this request change at all the plans for the Walzer dealership that's currently on Coon Rapids Boulevard? Because I think, or, whatever the other dealership is, right? Because I think there is another one in the area, right? And we were saying that was not going to change. Does your plan to expand this affect changing that dealership?
I can't comment for Walzer's intent on the existing Nissan dealership at this time. They come to us asking for this request because they want to do something better than they originally did in the last request. And, you know, it's consistent, as Mr. Harlecker said, with other dealerships in the area asking for additional land. You just approved, I think, last year Chrysler added two to three acres to their site, which is a similar request to Walzer's request. I mean, Walzer's going to build a facility there. So they can build it on the six acres, I guess. But, you know, they prefer to build it on 10 and have a better dealership to present to the city. So, I mean, the dealership is going to go in. So it's just a matter of, you know, are you okay with it being a little bit bigger or not? I mean, you know, that doesn't change. I mean, the cars are going to be there, the parking lots are similar to what was there before. So, you know, we're not asking for drastic changes. The box that were proposed in the original PUD, or rectangular, I mean, those things are going to, when you have your site plan review, you can certainly request that they do some other things, you know, to enhance the property of where the car dealership is. Because they spend, we're talking big money here. I mean, these are $10 million facilities that they're building. And, you know, if you guys have another thought, too, of when you ask for something else to be there, we've been on the market now for 10 years trying to find other things to do here. I mean, the hotel is finally coming. We've spent 10 years chasing a hotel to come to this site. So when you say, we, you know, we want something else there, I mean, if you guys have some knowledge here to help me, I'd be all in favor of that. But at this point, we're doing everything we can, which is why we went so long with the swim school. I mean, we're even participating in that deal with them in order to help them along. So we're doing all our efforts here to try to make this the best development we can. And unfortunately, you know, there's only so many buyers, so.
Commissioner Schwartz. Mr. Johnson.
Just for the folks that are listening in, just sort of caution to the public that the commission knows that it can't make a decision on this overall land use issue based on what particular developments might or might not go in.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny the case? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, excuse me, we had, in favor of the motion was Stevens?
Yes. Hosh.
Hosh, Stevenson, and Schwartz. And opposed was Schmokey, Casey, and Knoblock. All right, the motion passes denying the amendment at this time. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be sent to City Council for the May 3 meeting.
Mr. Harlecker, any other business?
Next month, we'll be seeing site plan approval for the hospital expansion. They're adding a 329-space, three-level parking deck along, kind of, next to where the Skyway is. And they're posing a 40,000-square-foot addition to their surgery OR department, as well as some extensive internal remodeling. So that's what we've got on your agenda next month. You'll be looking at the ER expansion, or, excuse me, the OR expansion.
So the OR expansion would be part of the main building?
Yes, it would.
And then the parking ramp is across the street by the?
Nope, it's on the same site. And it will be connected to the existing hospital, near the emergency room area. That whole emergency room area entrance will be reconfigured. And it's my understanding that's where the main entrance to the hospital will be, as well as the entrance to the emergency room.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else for the commission? If not, accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.